I will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, May 18th, 2020. I'd ask that you please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we meet in what has proven to be one of the more trying moments in American history, we are ever mindful of the challenges and the issues that befront us as they do all cities in the United States. We just ask for a blessing of guidance and understanding and hope and security and accomplishment as we go forward and overcome the coronavirus which has ravaged our country. We just ask for direction and understanding, and specifically in our own community, we want to remember all those who are inflicted with this disease and all those who are recovering from it. And we just ask that a special blessing be showered on all those and all those and their surrounding families and those whom they touch and are also concerned about their health. Tonight, we ask for vision and direction and guidance as we act on the various items of business before us, as it in the hearts and minds of each one of us, we're here to do what is in the best interest of the community of Batavia and in the future. As always, we also want to remember those from our community and from throughout the United States of America who are serving in foreign soils and the defense of the liberties of our country. We just ask that a special blessing be showered upon all those. We ask for all these blessings. Amen.
Amen.
Alderman Rosado, I can see you on the camera, so can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance if by the United States of the Republic.
And to the Republic. Which is. Thank you. That's the city clerk to please call the roll.
Mellon.
Here.
Rosado.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Knopf.
Here.
Chantet.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Darren.
Here.
O'Brien.
You.
Callahan.
Here.
Meitzler.
Here.
Malley. Malley. Euer.
Here.
Jerome.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
So I have 13 present, one absent.
Okay, the record reflect that we have 13 members of the city council present, we have one absent, so we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving to item number four in our agenda, I'd like to remind everyone to please speak into the microphone that's before you, as this is being recorded by BATV for broadcast and also for the, so everybody who's tuned in can hear this in whatever form or fashion they are listening. Moving then to item number five, which are items to be removed, added or changed on tonight's agenda, Alderman Chantet, Governmental Services Chairman, do you have anything?
Your Honor, I'm aware of none.
Anybody else? Okay, we have no need then to remove any items to be changed or added to the agenda. Moving then to six, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda, Alderman Chantet, would you do this, please?
Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows. The May 15th, 2020 payroll in the amount of $879,520.87 and the accounts payable check register in the amount of $3,152,880.33. Your Honor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second, not.
Moved by Alderman Chantet, was it second by Alderman McFadden for the approval of the consent agenda presented, any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Chantet.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Darren.
Hi.
O'Brien.
Hi.
Callahan.
Hi.
Meitzler.
Hi.
Malley, sorry. Euer.
Hi.
Jerome.
Hi.
McFadden.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Rosado.
Hi.
Beck.
Hi.
Knopf.
Hi.
Consent agenda is approved by a vote of 13 yes, no, no's, one absent. Moving then to item number seven, which is matters from the public. For items not on the agenda, do we have anybody this evening that's on that would like to address the city council?
I don't see anybody with.
Your Honor, this is Tony Malley, here now.
Okay, but the record reflected Alderman Malley has entered the meeting, so we now have the full complement of 14 Aldermen. Thank you, Aldermen. So we have no comments from the public that we are hearing or requesting, so we'll move on then to items number seven, which is appointment, the reappointment, which I'm going to make of Randy Dyke to be a member of the Batavia Fire Pension Board. I'd ask for a motion and second for the confirmation of that.
So moved, Wolf.
Second. Jerome.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by, which one if you like, there was a lot of voices.
Alderman Jerome.
Alderman Jerome, okay. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll on the appointment of Randy Dyke to the Batavia Fire Pension Board.
Wolf.
Hi.
Darren.
Hi.
O'Brien.
Hi.
Callahan.
Hi.
Meitzler.
Hi.
Malley.
Hi.
Euer.
Hi.
Jerome.
Hi.
McFadden.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Rosado.
Hi.
Beck.
Hi.
Knopf.
Hi.
Chantet.
Hi.
The motion to reappoint Randy Dyke to the Batavia Fire Pension Board is approved by a vote of 14 yes, no, no's, none absent. Okay, moving to nine, which is proclamation for Public Works Week. Alderman Chantet?
Your Honor, a proclamation. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as streets, water, wastewater, and electric, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey Day Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, Illinois, proclaim the week of May 17th through 23rd, 2020, as National Public Works Week in the City of Batavia, and I call upon citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life on this 18th day of May 2020. Signed, Mayor Jeffrey Day Shelkey. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the proclamation as read.
Second, not.
Moved by Alderman Chantet, second by Alderman Knopf, for the approval of the proclamation is read, any discussion? Kirk, please call the roll.
This is Laura, I just wanted to say a few words. You know, the, the Public Works Department is also among the city's first responders, and nowhere was that more evident over the weekend than with the tremendous storms that we had, and our Public Works Department was there for the call. It came out to help folks not only with street flooding, but with their basements flooding, and I just want to definitely say as part of this proclamation how essential their services are to our community in those situations and always.
Thank you, I would second that. I was here all weekend and received all the pages about what was happening, and the volume of calls was maybe in my view an all-time record for weekend callouts. There were a lot of different things going on, and public works seemed to handle them very promptly and without much fanfare and got many things corrected, and I know that in some instances they helped some people stop water running into their houses and helped senior citizens who had gotten themselves into some unique situations. I just can't say I agree wholeheartedly with what Laura has just said, that we are very blessed to have the public works team that we have in Batavia. So, no further comments, I entertain a motion that, or we have a motion and second for the approval of the National Public Works Proclamation. Kirk call the roll.
Chantet.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Darren.
Hi.
O'Brien.
Hi.
Callahan.
Hi.
Meitzler.
Hi.
Malley. Malley. Euer.
Hi.
Jerome.
Hi.
McFadden.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Rosado.
Hi.
Beck.
Hi.
Knopf.
Hi.
I did not get a vote from Malley.
You may have to step out, so the motion is approved by a vote of 13 yes, a no, no's, one absent, so thanks for those who participated in the preparation of that nice proclamation. Next one is item number 10, which is proclamation for National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Alderman Chantet, would you present this?
Your Honor, a proclamation. Whereas every day, 100 Americans are killed by gun violence, and on average, there are nearly 13,000 gun homicides every year, and whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other high-income countries, and whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is mayor's highest responsibility, and whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories, and whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe, and whereas in January 2013, Hadia Pendleton, a teenager who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade, was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, should now be celebrating her 23rd birthday, and whereas to help honor Hadia and the 100 Americans whose lives are cut short in the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated June 7th, 2019, the first Friday of June, as the Fifth Gun Annual Violence Day, and whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadia's friends who had asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, they chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life, and whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 5th, the first Friday in June of 2020, to help raise awareness about gun violence, and whereas by wearing orange on June 5th, 2020, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors, and whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey Day Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, declare June 5th, 2020, the first Friday of June, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic events of gun violence and to honor, and to honor and value human lives. Signed, Jeffrey Day Shelkey, Mayor. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the proclamation as read.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Chantet, second by Alderman Beck, for the approval of the proclamation as presented, any discussion? I would just note, this is the second year now that we have done this, we have a very active group of local residents who are involved in this movement, I've talked with them several times, and I've cautioned to them that, you know, I certainly support their intents here, but the other thing that we have to be very careful of is respectful of the Second Amendment or the U.S. Constitution, which guarantees rights to ownership of firearms for responsible individuals, and I think this memo takes care of that in wording that I would agree to, so I would encourage the council's adoption assist, and thank those who have been involved in its presentation and preparation, because I think it does remind us all the issues that confront us in this country, and one that certainly has hit home in Batavia more than once over the many years that I've been around, and certainly one that I think is going to be with us for a number of years to come, and it's important that we recognize the issues that surround gun violence, so that's my two cents on that. Anybody else want to say anything?
Your Honor, Mike O'Brien.
Yes.
I would just like to say that I appreciate everything that's been said, but it's just not enough sometimes, I don't know what the solution is, but there are too many Americans who are being killed with gun violence, and I fully understand honoring the Second Amendment, but I think people take it too far, and I don't know how to, how to, how to prevent all this violence, maybe we should start recognizing that there is mental health issues in our country and not put such a stigma to that, and, and start, you know, funding mental health, work on the mental health people. I just wanted to get that out there, that, you know, when people say, you know, our thoughts and prayers, thoughts and prayers are not doing it anymore. I honestly thought that after what happened in Newtown, Connecticut, there would have been some changes, and there haven't been, and it's really kind of frightening and disturbing that things still have not been improved, and I'm not looking to take anybody's guns, I'm not looking to step on the Second Amendment, but I think we need to start educating our people a lot better that violence is taking lives, and it's gun violence doing it, so I guess I've said enough, so sorry to take your time, but I think it's important that we all recognize that.
Well, I don't think he took anybody's time here, I thank you for saying that, I think it's an important message that we all should carry forth, I just feel that it's important that we at least pass this proclamation to kind of bring the subject up and let everybody reflect on it and respond, and many, like, many, like you just said, Alderman O'Brien, that we do have a national problem that is ongoing here, and it's one that we just should not sweep under the carpet, we need to keep it in focus and try to deal with it while, however ways we can, so I appreciate your good efforts and thoughts, and let's hope that we continue forward in trying to deal with this whole issue. Anybody else?
Your Honor, Dan, I would just echo Mike's remarks, as I've been vocal on the floor before, but I would also say thank you for your leadership here, and you appreciate that we are keeping awareness, and we do need to keep talking about this, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Callahan, did you want to say something?
Yes, sir, I, I do appreciate what you were just saying, and kind of to bring it back to a personal level, the person that I'm thinking of, his name is Jerry, he was less than a year younger than I was, and one of my first six months on, as a police officer on Christmas Day, 1993, I saw him expire right in front of me due to this, so he was the first person that I saw due to gun violence get cut down in a street, it has been with me, and it was not the only one, but it does make a lasting impression on all families and first responders for the rest of their lives.
Anybody else? Alderman O'Brien just mentioned it, so I'm going to just share a thought with you, the Newtown, Connecticut shooting in, in the elementary school was one of the, probably one of the worst national stories I think I can ever remember, and unfortunately for Batavia, the night of that shooting, we were having a committee meeting at this council chambers, and I wasn't running the meeting, I was just sitting there, I believe the committee chairman at the time was running, or the mayor pro tem was running the meeting, and I get a page on my phone from the Batavia Police Department Records Office, would I please step out in the hall? So I get up from the meeting and I go out in the hall, and here stands ABC, NBC, and WGN, and they're all there wanting me to research for them whether or not the grandparents of one of the kids who had been killed in the Newtown, Connecticut, violence, still lived in Batavia because they were trying to find these grandparents, and they were all going to be the lead story on the 10 o'clock news. That's one of the worst memories I have had as the mayor of Batavia. I went in and checked the utility billing records and found that the grandparents, yes, had lived in Batavia up on North Forest Avenue, and they had unfortunately had moved from Batavia to Newtown, Connecticut on the 30th of October of that year, the grandfather was the business manager of the Episcopal Church of Geneva, and he had retired, and they had moved from Batavia to Newtown so that they could take care of their three grandchildren while their parents commuted into New York City, and so they were up there when this terrible thing happened, they had just left Batavia, it only been, because this happened, I believe, on the 14th of December, and they had just left Batavia five, six weeks before, and I never remember looking at the utility billing record and said, bill paid in full, moved to Newtown, Connecticut, October 30th, and I remember going out and saying that to NBC and all those fine folks, and then they wanted me to go on and say, tell this story, and I said I would not do it, it was one of the worst things I've ever heard of, I didn't want anything to do with it, so then they told me, well, you, you're a public official, you just told us, so we're going to go, work on there and quote you, so they all did, and so that's my really sad story with gun violence, but it's one that I will never forget, so hopefully people hear these stories, maybe it drives in as the one that Alderman Callahan was just, was able to share, another very sad tale, I think these drive home that, you know, gun violence is not something that's hidden away, 100 miles away from us, it's right in here in our face, and we have many of us who have had personal direct experience with people who have been victims of gun violence, and so I don't mean to hark on this, but it is a very sensitive subject. So, we have a motion and a second, Kirk call the roll.
Chantet.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Darren.
Hi.
O'Brien.
Hi.
Callahan.
Hi.
Meitzler.
Hi.
Malley.
Hi, I also brought I on the previous one, I had a little connection issue.
Okay, thank you. Euer.
Hi.
Jerome.
Hi.
McFadden.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Rosado.
Hi.
Beck.
Hi.
Knopf.
Hi.
Proclamation for National Gun Violence Day Awareness Day is approved, 14 yes, no, no's, none absent, thank you all very much. So now we go from a very dark subject to a very bright subject, and that's the Batavia Main Street program, and we're honored to have Sherri Wilcox, our extremely talented executive director, who is here tonight to give us the latest update, and I will tell you that my observation is Sherri has walked into a ring of fire here with all the things that are going on around her as far as trying to put together programs and all the restrictions and momentary delays that have been put on all governments and all businesses, Sherri's got the monumental task at the moment, and so I take my hat off to you, Sherri, and why don't you tell us what you can tell us?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate all your, your good thoughts. I want to start out with some really positive news, some of you may have read this already on, on social media or in our e-blast, but I wanted to share it so everybody could hear it. This month, this community raised an incredible amount of money for our local businesses in downtown Batavia, nearly $13,000 through two projects. We did a collaboration gift boxes, which were gift boxes themed and filled with an assortment of, of products and gift certificates from our local merchants, over 36 local merchants from downtown Batavia gave us products, or repurchased products, I should say, for these boxes, sold the boxes for about $100 apiece, and all of the funds went back to local businesses, over $9,000 from that project alone, went back to local businesses to sell the products that they would normally sell, many of these businesses that can't even be open at all right now. The support from the community was, was excellent, people really liked it, and it helped a lot of businesses. At the same time, we ran the t-shirt campaign, which I can't take credit for, this was a brainchild of the folks at, at Black Cactus T-shirt shop, who offered our local community an opportunity to have t-shirts printed with their business logo, that's all they had to do was provide the art, and Andrew and his staff printed those t-shirts up, sold them to order to, to anybody who wanted to buy them, and we, together, we marketed them to the local business community to do, and then to the, to the greater Batavia community to purchase, and ended up raising over $3,400 for our local business community, and that doesn't even count the cut that, that Black Cactus got, also a local business, to help pay their people and to print the t-shirts, so you add that to, to what we're still doing with taking care of caretakers, helping our, our local restaurant community through all those, those wonderful donations we got from the community, and I have to say, it's been great to write the checks, so I'm happy, and, and we are humbled at Batavia Main Street by the support that our community is giving to our local businesses. Speaking of local businesses, the Boardwalk Shop Project is moving along, the hopes are to get those eight vendors into their spaces by the end of this month, they're still painting and, and light construction work to do, so if, if you have the skill set, please don't hesitate to reach out to Bob Hanson at Funway and, and volunteer a little time, I'm sure he could, could use a little more help there, but we're hopeful that, that we'll be able to get our, our small businesses in by the end of the month, and, you know, they'll be ready to open just as soon as the governor says that they can, and some of them may even be set up to do curbside deliveries and online orders, just like our, our other retailers, so, so we're looking forward to that. Probably the most important thing I want to talk about tonight is what we're most excited about, and what's taken up a lot of our time right now, is the farmer's market. Our, our indoor farmer's market turned into a curbside pre-order market, and that is running just fine, and May 30th, we open our outdoor market. We are very cognizant of the opportunity that we have with farmer's markets being deemed essential, just like grocery stores and, and other essential businesses, and we've been working closely with the Illinois Farmer's Market and the City of Batavia to make sure that the farmer's market on River Street this season is, is a healthy, safe, happy place for people to be. A lot of the details and the changes that take place will be released over the next few days, we've been handing some things out to people who come to the curbside market, but I just wanted to highlight a couple things, a couple of changes that are significant for, for the council. First of all, the market for social distancing purposes, the vendors will be spaced, the booths will be spaced 10 feet apart, and they will only be down one side of River Street. This will allow for a lot more social distancing, people to line up, step back from the tables. Because of that, the market will run from Wilson all the way down to Spring, and will have overflow in that lot at Spring and River, again, to increase the, the amount of space that people have so they don't have to be on top of each other. Probably the most significant is everybody who's going to be involved in the farmer's market needs to cover their face, so face coverings will be required from everyone, attendees, vendors, volunteers, and staff, if you're going to come to the market, you're going to have to cover your mug, and we want to make sure that we can continue to do this, people are really excited about having it, so we need to do it right, so we're asking for everybody's cooperation with that. Few other little things, there'll be sanitizer at all the booths, we'll also have volunteers with spray sanitizer for, to spray people's hands, we're encouraging pre-ordering, one thing in particular for folks who can't wear a mask, or for folks who might be uncomfortable coming to the market, Gerald Subaru, one of our, our sponsors and partners at Batavia Main Street, has graciously offered to do free delivery for people who preorder their products from our vendors who offer it, Gerald will, will drive your delivery to your home free of charge on Saturday, so we're really excited to be able to offer that opportunity to folks this year, given all the challenges. There's not going to be any cash purchases, if you come with cash, you're not going to be able to get change, so we're encouraging people to use, to use prepaid and credit cards because it's, it's cleaner, please leave your pets at home, again, for social distancing, we want to make this market as accessible for as many people as possible, for as many households as possible, that's kind of the highlights of the changes that we see in the market, obviously, as things change, we'll tweak it as well, but our vendors are very excited, we have about 40 vendors ready to go on May 30th, and we look forward to this being a real highlight of the season, there's so many things we can't do, we really want to do this one right and make it something that, that everyone in Batavia can take advantage of, who needs the market and who depends on the market. And then finally, I just wanted to, to say, I don't know how many family members are, are listening who. And then finally, I just wanted to, to say, I don't know how many family members are, are listening who, who have graduates this month, but this is an important month for, for a lot of young people here in the Batavia community, whether they're fifth grade graduates or, or middle school, moving on, our, our class of 2020 at Batavia High School and our, our many, many college graduates who are residents here in Batavia. We recognize that this is a rite of passage that, that, you know, you, you may have missed and, and it may not feel as celebratory, but just know that, that we're there with you and we appreciate all your hard work and, and on behalf of the Batavia Main Street team and, and everyone in downtown Batavia, just a heartfelt congratulations to all of our Batavia graduates right now. And we wish you all the best in whatever your journey, wherever your journey takes you.
Well, thank you very much. That's a very insightful presentation. Does anybody in the council have any questions? Is Sherry? Okay, thank you.
Okay, yep.
Moving then to item number 12, the administrator's report. Laura?
Thank you very much, Mayor. So I'll begin today to explain that there have been a number of the committee of the whole meetings that we have canceled. About three of them in fact over in, in May alone. And the reason being that the governor's executive order, which allowed for the meetings to be held virtually remotely. Also, part of that order requested that we meet if we have necessary items of business. And so we're trying to keep that to a minimum. And that's why you may have seen some of those meetings be canceled. Wanted to highlight, Main Street was just here, but both Main Street and the chamber have been doing an extraordinary job responding to the needs of our community in this unprecedented pandemic. And we come together once per week on a phone call to brainstorm ideas of ways that the three of us can collaborate to assist businesses. The first of these was to plan a town hall meeting for business that we hosted, was hosted by the Chamber of Commerce last Thursday at 1:00 PM. And we had about 100 folks on that call. So it was a great opportunity to provide our business community with an update on what is going on at the city and, and the services and, and how we can help them during this crisis. And we, with the success of that, we'll be scheduling more of those. We're going to look to do one in June that will be more of an opportunity for the business community to ask questions of specific departments. And we certainly hope that by that time, we'll be moving into phase three of the Restore Illinois Plan. Another idea that has been generated by this group is to come up with a pledge program for business where they can sign a pledge that they engage in safe practices that protect not only their employees, but their patrons. And by signing that pledge form allows them to become a certified as one of the businesses that has signed that pledge and that we will indicate that in some way on their business. So right now Griffin is working on the branding for this program. And we are excited to be able to kick that off as soon as possible. In finance, right now, they are working on the comprehensive annual financial report. And we expect that that will be completed in mid-June. Steph met with Dave Patzelt from Shodin last week to go over the revised plans. And he will be resubmitting to plan commission for their design approval of the changes that were presented about the One Washington Place project on April 28th. We also discussed the changes that need to be made to the current redevelopment agreements. So that will be our third amended and restated redevelopment agreements. And so we're having our attorney review those changes before they will be presented at a future committee of the whole meeting. Also, Shodin has asked that we submit the design plans for the parking garage to our parking construction consultant so that the basic design can be approved for them then to take that to the construction drawing phase. And we also described the process by developer will continue to seek the permit for the left turn lane from northbound Washington Street to westbound State Street with IDOT. Other projects, we're reviewing the revised plans for the Menards expansion. And we expect that they will be on a, a committee whole meeting soon for your review as well. In public work, they're just finishing the 2019 Area 3 Combined Tour project. We're in the final punch list stage. And that means that we are ready to gear up and begin the 2020 Area 3 project, which is scheduled to commence construction in just the next few days. Prairie is currently on schedule. However, we are some private utility conflicts that are posing a threat to the schedule. We definitely, it's, it's a large project. We want to get it underway as soon as possible. But the, the project itself at best is, is looking to conclude in mid-November. So we're working with the utility companies to try to resolve their issues as quickly as possible. Main Street is on schedule, but the staging of the work needed to be modified due to some utility conflicts again. The design engineers, construction engineers, IDOT and contractor are all working to address those issues now. And as I mentioned, you know, city crews have been out each day since this past Friday, addressing the drainage and flooding issues and concerns throughout the community. And let's see, lastly, we've been receiving a number of complaints about traffic driving very quickly through residential neighborhoods in, in our city. And this does seem to like flare up and become a problem from time to time. But we've had a lot of success in the past with our Slow Down campaign. And so Griffin Price is also working on an update to our Slow Down sign, create a little bit of a newer design to it. And we hope that we'll be able to roll that program out in the next couple of weeks as well. And that's all I have unless anybody has any questions for me.
I have a question. This is Nick Serone.
Go ahead.
A question, is there a way for us to get a preview of those, the redevelopment changes that you forwarded to the attorneys? Can we get a preview since we're not really sitting in cows and discussing this stuff? Can we at least? Thank you.
Anybody else? Alderman Callahan?
Laura, question on the consultant for the parking garage. Is there a cost for that?
Yes, that has been budgeted for the complete project, not just for this small portion of it. I believe that Gary Holm is also on the call, so he may be able to answer that question better than I can.
We have requested a proposal from the engineer, but at this time we haven't received a response back from him yet. So I don't have a, I don't have a cost yet.
Why would we pay for that one?
That's a review that's being done on behalf of the city. This is a multimillion dollar parking garage that's being constructed and ultimately owned and maintained by the city. We want to make sure that it's, you know, the construction details, everything is, is kind of how we want it. So that when we own it and we have to maintain it, that it's all the way we want it. As opposed to just, you know, showing up one day and cutting the ribbon to a parking garage that we had no input into.
No, I understand that part of it. I just didn't know why we would pay for it or not pay for it versus Shodin paying for it.
I think it goes into the soft costs. I mean, and, and with this RDA, if I recall, the soft costs are upfront anyways and it's part of the, the overall cost. Whether we're cutting the check or the developer is and we're reimbursing him, we're basically cutting the check.
Right. And the consultant is being hired to look out for the city's best interests, which is why we're paying the cost of it.
Any other questions, Laura? All right. Going then to committee reports. Government Services, Alderman Chantet?
I have nothing to report tonight, Your Honor.
City Services, Alderman Wolf?
No report tonight, Your Honor. Just a request to anybody that happens to be out and, in the streets at all, to watch all the drains. I know a lot of people, including myself, just put mulch out and ended up with some of it out into the street. And we want to make sure those drains stay clear. So when we do get more rain, it, it goes away. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Development, Alderman Chance or Callahan?
Thank you. Nothing to report. I would request if we've got some of the, kind of along what Nick was saying, if we have a timeline for some of the decisions that need to be made on some of the developments, if we could get those out to the council.
Okay.
Hey, Public Utilities, Alderman O'Brien?
Nothing to report, Your Honor.
All right, very good. Do we have other business from the council tonight?
Your Honor, this is Alderman Meitzler. I have one item to bring up.
Certainly.
First off, I just wanted to extend a, a tremendous amount of gratitude to Gary and his department. The Carriage Park area, as has been discussed in the past, receives an inordinate amount of swelling when these type of rains occur. Flooding, backfill, if you will, the storm sewer is, is, you know, doing its best to keep up. But the, when these type of rains happen, there's just only so much that can fit down that pipe. And I, I've certainly seen the amount of correspondence, correspondence that's gone back and forth via email. And just from that, I'm aware that there's been a number of residents in the third ward around that Carriage Park area that have been in phone contact with not just Gary, but other members of that department. So again, I, I really want to commend Public Works for staying on top of that area, for doing what they can to alleviate it. I realize that it's a difficult scenario. And at some point, there's only so many places the water can go. You know, and inevitably it's just oversaturation. I am curious as to the, the item that we had approved back in 2019, I want to say it was sometime around August, maybe September, to get the study done for the Carriage Crest Recharge Basin, to see where we're at with that study, to see what the next steps are coming out of that study, to see what kind of progress or if there's any other solutions we can bring to this area to help the residents of that area who are, who are definitely dealing with some water issues in basements and otherwise.
Thank you.
If you comment on that, if you'd like.
Please.
Our engineers are working and they're about ready to wrap up the initial, the preliminary phase one study. One of the things that delayed us a little bit was the need for environmental, because we, you know, we are proposing a pumping solution, which would, which would pump groundwater out from that area. We all know that historically there was a municipal dump in that area. So we did need to do and, and kind of are in the process of wrapping up environmental assessment to make sure that that area doesn't have any environmental issues. So that's the stage where we're at right now is just finalizing that up. And then phase two engineering is in the 2020 budget. Right now it's under the hold list, on, on the budget hold list. But that obviously is a policy thing for, for city council. But we, we are wrapping up phase one here, I would guess, within the next month at the latest, we'll have phase one finished.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Other business from the council?
Your Honor, Dan, really briefly?
Certainly.
I just wanted to bring up a former speaker, someone who had presented before the council, Lindsey Hartman, from Point to Point, had spoken about harm reduction and providing safer snorting kits, things like that for people who do use drugs. But she is more concerned about their health and overall well-being because she knows that by making those connections, it is a easier road to recovery in getting yourself from addiction. I had the opportunity to connect with a friend who needed her services and was able to get safer snorting kits, as well as fentanyl testing strips over to someone who definitely needs them. And I appreciate that the council had invited her in the past. As soon as we can have a live council meeting with, with people in our chambers again, we should certainly think about inviting her to come back and to promote the good work she does in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Going to item 15, the mayor's report. I just got a couple of things I'd like to comment on. First of all, I don't know if everybody even knew him because he's been gone for a few years, but Jim Benson, who was our city building inspector for in excess of 30 years, passed away last, late last week. And I just wanted to take a couple of moments of tribute and appreciation to Jim for his service to the citizens of Batavia. Jim started with us, I believe, around 1970 and maybe even before that, and eventually took over as the chief building inspector of the city. And after he was getting ready to retire, one day he and I went for a ride in, in the car. And we're riding around, we were over on the northeast side in the industrial park. And Jim was recalling that when he started as the city building inspector, there was basically only two factories out in that whole area. One was the Walker Muffler Company Building, which is now a Suncast. And the other was the, then recently moved CNF Forge Building from down on Water Street out to Kirk Road. That's still standing out there. And Jim said he could sit, sit in the car and look around and look at, there's now, I believe, about 85 different industries and businesses out there. And that he took it as a great moment of personal pride that he basically was the building inspector for almost every one of those buildings that is in that industrial park. That all of them that were out there, he had his hand in reviewing the plans and meeting with them and whatever. And he thought, number one, and the number of new jobs that had been created and the tax base that had been built for the, both the community and the school districts, both Batavia and Geneva share parts of that area, which we have out there. And he took enormous pride in that. He also noted that in 1980, or he, he got appointed sometime between 70 and 80 as the building inspector. And in the 1980 census, the population of Batavia was about 12,574, I think is the number he shot at me. And as he said, he looked at it a couple of years ago, and that 12,574 now doubled. And that he had been there to basically see Batavia double itself in size. And so I just wanted to pay a moment of tribute to him. He certainly did a lot of work and I think he was a great spokesman for the city. He answered a lot of questions. I think in some respects, he talked some businesses even to come in here and opening up shop and building a new building. In addition to that, he served for many years as a member of the Batavia Volunteer Force on our fire department. And back in the days before we had as many paid people as we now enjoy, Jim was back in the old, old days. His office was right there next to the old fire station on South Shumway, or now Shumway on the South Island when that was. And Jim used to joke that when he could hear the bell ring, he could run out of his office and run over and get in the jump seat of the fire truck alongside the one guy that was on duty. And so many times he was the second person on the fire truck because he worked right at City Hall and he could get on the truck. So those are nice kind of small town memories of somebody who served us without much fanfare, but really did his job. And I just want to express to Jim's family the sincere sympathies and, and prayers of the community of Batavia for a gentleman who left his very inevitable mark on Batavia and made it a great place for a lot of people to proudly call their home. So Jim, thanks for all you did to make Batavia a very nice livable community and something that will serve future generations very well. I also wanted to just pick up on what Sherry from Main Street had talked about a little bit about the Batavia High School graduation. And I just want to, I shared this, I think, on the other day on my call, but this is a memorable year in graduation of Batavia High School because this is the 150th year of Batavia High School. It was formed in 1870. And this would be, if you do the math on that, it's 150 years of age this year. And this would be, if you do the math on that, it's 150 years of age this year. And it's a shame we couldn't have had a graduation. I've been racking my brain and talking with some other people about something we could do to kind of honor that particular event and certainly let everybody that's in that class know that they were a pivotal, pivotal point in Batavia's history in the school district because they were the ones that were here 150 years after the building, or the school was opened. So I just want to extend to the, all the graduates of 2020 from Batavia High School, the very best wishes of the City Council and myself as they go forward in their careers and lives, knowing that they represent a proud moment of Batavia's history at what turned out to be kind of a troubling time. But we all gotten through it, we will get through it. And what they will help accomplish in the days ahead, I'm sure will go a long way toward making our world a greater and grander place. And hopefully, that education they got from Batavia High School will play a major focus and role in that success that I'm sure many of them will achieve. So graduates, on behalf of the City Council, congratulations, best wishes, and may your future be very, very bright. And may you be very proud of the future, in the future of your days that you spent as a member of Batavia High School. So I guess my final point is, I'd just like to take a final second. And I have to do this every day with certain people. This, this whole Corona thing is perhaps the most complex and challenging thing I've ever had to face in my many years as Mayor of Batavia. It is very complex in the fact that there is no real strong set of rules. As you read in the paper, there's all kinds of people trying to figure out a way around them or do them, or some public officials have even announced they're not going to succumb to them. And then they get injunctions served on by the state's attorneys and all this other stuff. There's broad insurance questions about if governments like ours go out and take exception to the governor's order. Are we setting ourselves up for some liability insurance issues or even non-coverage of insurance? There's just a whole fortitude of things that are out there that I think we have to be very careful how we act on. But I guess what I'd like to say is, I am very proud of Batavia as to how we have handled it. This has been, as I just mentioned, you know, kind of a crushing load of things like Batavia High School prom and graduation. Certainly, our church community really had, you know, not fight, but worked very hard to make sure that all of their congregations got to see a Memorial Day service and, not a Memorial Day, an Easter Day service. And also Good Friday and Palm Sunday, all that got canceled. And, you know, now Memorial Day program looks like it's going to be probably severely restricted. We are still in the process of trying to decide what we can and cannot do this summer in Batavia. And this schedule, as it's been posted by the Governor's Office, presents a lot of challenges to us. So I will describe it as, I am not very optimistic at this moment because I don't think the final, final decision has been made that we're going to have the annual Fourth of July fireworks program. And I'm very sorry to have to share that with you, but I think that may very well happen. If it does happen that we don't have it, I know that the Batavia Fireworks Committee, which are an outstanding group of dedicated citizens, are trying to do anything they can to come up with something that will kind of, nothing will take its place, but we can do something that will speak to Batavia's commitment to patriotism, to the American flag, to the goodness of the American way of life, and to somehow try to send a message that we're out here, not forgetting where we came and how proud we are. At the same time, we want to be very careful that we're not spreading any Corona and that we're out there making sure we're, everybody is following all the suggested rules and regulations. And so this is yet to be all kind of worked out. And I would suggest that if we're going to do anything, it's probably going to be near the beginning or the middle of the summer. It may be near the end of the summer or even into the fall. But I'm hopeful that Batavia's organizations and governments will be able to come together and will put something out there that will give us all a little moment of reflection about the goodness of our country and of our community and how we live as citizens in Batavia. So I don't want people to think, well, the city's just walked away from it and we're not doing anything to try to promote some of the good times we've had in the past. And hopefully, we will continue to enjoy in the future. This is just a difficult moment for very, very serious reasons that the federal and state government have enacted the restrictions on us that there are. But we are of the belief that these days are numbered and we will be able to rise up and smile our face and be come forward with some very exciting things for Batavia in the not-too-distant future. So I'll end there and thank all the members of the council for your continued good service to this community. Batavia is so indeed fortunate to have the 14 men and women on the city council that we have. I get the chance in my other roles in the region to talk to a lot of other mayors and a lot of other village presidents. And inevitably, many of them are talking about problems they have with other officials in other cities. One being that they don't have, a lot of them that want to even come to government. They've been elected to it, but their attendance records are bad or they are having all kinds of different issues. In Batavia, we strongly have our disagreements, but at the end of the debate, we all come back together and we go forward. And, you know, we all try to work with what our final decisions is. And so that's really the blessing that I feel I have here with this group that we have in Batavia today is, is that everybody at the table or on the screen, as I guess I would say tonight, has the true heart and soul of this community in their ideas of what is best. And they are not here to do anything but serve Batavia to the very best that it can be served. So let us go forward in this troubling moment, knowing that the bright, the future will be brighter and that we have a strong foundation in which to keep this town really up and running. And we are served outstandingly by some very great members on the city council. So thank you. Somebody want to make a moment or motion for adjournment?
I move adjourn.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, I got a motion by Alderman Wolf and second by somebody. Then somebody want, Alvin Callahan, you want to say something?
Yes, sir, because I didn't know if you were going to address it. So I didn't want to step on your toes with it. But something will be going regarding a graduation parade two days from now. And a lot of the planned out route is through Ward Two, Ward Two, Three and Seven. I think just, we're going to be receiving probably, I know we're going to be receiving a lot of questions about can people line the route, take part, et cetera, et cetera? Is this a city-sponsored thing? Don't need any answers tonight, but just want to make sure everybody's aware of it so that if the answers, if we could maybe get some information in the next day or so.
Well, you just told me something I have not heard a word about. So I don't know anything about it. So nobody's bothered to talk to the mayor, so.
It is a route that has been prepared and is apparently going to be escorted by the Kane County Sheriff.
No, that's not surprising.
So, and that's why it's going.
It's nothing that, neither the school district, with the school district, the school district was not approached about this and nor was the city of Batavia. So we only just became aware of it 20 minutes before the meeting started.
Right, yeah. And like I said, that's, when I had seen it too, but it will be probably receiving a lot of calls about it as it's supposed to be at 7:00 PM, requesting all families and their students to meet in the Sam's Club parking lot.
So.
At 7:00 PM.
We, we have been contacted, for instance, by the churches prior to Easter regarding having some type of celebration, drive-in or drive-through. And it clearly is, is not allowed under the executive order. And it makes it seem like even more an affirmation of that that after Easter, and the governor came out with his additional executive order 2020-32, he specifically called that churches now would be allowed to do either or a drive-through type of service with their parish. So given the fact that the governor made an exception for churches, seems to kind of underline that types of gatherings are not something that comply with the shelter-in-place order. Or the stay-at-home order, I should say. Not considered essential travel. And frankly, if, if it's the case that everyone is going to remain in their vehicles with only the members of their household, I would be surprised. And anything else puts the public's health at risk.
Yeah, and that's why I think that out of an abundance of caution, there's going to be the perception that there, since another elected official may be taking part in it, it may give the appearance that this is a sanctioned event and people may show up on the sidewalks for a parade, especially due to the emotional nature of graduation and the heightened sensitivity around that. It will be very challenging to get that understood.
Yes, we'll do our best. Thank you.
So we have a motion and second for adjournment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Bye.
Good night.
Aye, good night.
Good night.
Goodbye.